Is that Susan Brown?
Good morning, School Board. My name is Suzanne Brown. I'm a senior attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles in the Long Beach office, and I'm here to speak on the PLA item. A large part of my work at LaFla is working on economic development strategies for low-income communities. We are very happy to see that the Board is considering a PLA with local and disadvantaged hiring. PLAs with robust local and disadvantaged hiring provide excellent career pathways for local and disadvantaged residents. As you consider the development of a PLA, we request that you consider the following items. First, please work collaboratively with community-based organizations and coalitions such as the Long Beach Local Hire Coalition, as there is a lot of community expertise regarding how to structure local and disadvantaged hire within a PLA so that everybody benefits. Second, lots of thought should go into your definitions of what constitute local and disadvantaged workers to ensure that those most in need are benefiting from the PLA. Third, local and disadvantaged hiring should be measured by a percent of work hours, not a percent of persons. Fourth, contractors should be required to hire an independent jobs coordinator to build the pipeline for local and disadvantaged workers. We have learned that, from other PLAs, that local and disadvantaged hiring is not successful without an independent jobs coordinator. Finally, we recommend the use of penalties for contractors who do not comply with local and disadvantaged hiring requirements. Thank you for your consideration of our comments. We look forward to partnering with you as this continues to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Miller?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Eric Miller, and I'm the Executive Director of Playa Vista Job Opportunities and Business Services, which is a nonprofit organization that helps people break the cycle of poverty through employment. And so, as my friend Suzanne Brown just alluded to, we work as an independent jobs coordinator on billions of dollars of projects throughout the county. With that said, we have been able to help over 20,000 young men and young women from disadvantaged communities throughout our county break the cycle of poverty through employment in partnership with our friends in the trades. And so, we've been really, really blessed to help a lot of people. With me today, I've brought two pieces to that puzzle, which is our jobs coordinator, Ms. Angelica Luna, and one of our case managers and/or what we call a coach, and Christian Seguenza. Oh, yes, fancy last name. But with that said, we are very much influential in helping young men and young women from disadvantaged communities get into the trades, because when you bring on an independent jobs coordinator, similar to PV Jobs, we provide the supportive services needed, not only to help them get into the trades as we work in partnership with the trades, but we also provide the supportive services to keep them consistently working. And so, as a nonprofit, we get programmatic funds in regards to support from the state and feds that provide things like tools. We provide things like healthcare. We provide things like childcare services. All of these things that are important for young men and young women that are looking for an opportunity to break that cycle of poverty through employment, to not have any barriers to employment. So as you go through this process, we ask that you continue to consider the independent jobs coordinator request, along with working with your community partners, as PV Jobs is also here in the community. One of our most recent grants totaling a little bit shorter than $3.5 million services both North Long Beach and Central Long Beach. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chris Hannan?
Good morning, Honorable Board Members, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent. My name is Chris Hannan. I'm a representative for the Los Angeles Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council, and I looked through the bond update report that's going to be given shortly here to the Board, and wanted to report back to the Board that had a very positive meeting with facilities and with Allen. We had a collaborative discussion on opportunities for Long Beach Unified Students, for internship opportunities with Long Beach Call, as well as being able to supply a skilled and trained workforce to the contractors performing the modernization bond to the facilities. Much of the report, very great, and I know that Allen is going to do a good job presenting everything, but I did want to highlight a couple things in the report. One of your projects stated that it's delayed for a number of reasons, but one of the reasons it's listed as being delayed now is manpower shortages. With a community workforce agreement or a project labor agreement, contractors, whether they're union or non-union, get access to a skilled and trained workforce. They get access to not only local apprentices, but local experienced journey-level members that become their employees, and it does away with the manpower shortages. We have over 25 different apprenticeship programs in the area with over 15,000 apprentices today, training to become the future journey-level workforce of the Los Angeles and Long Beach region. So whether they're a non-union contractor, whether they're a union contractor, they get access to those. Another point in here, it's talked about increased cost. I can't find a justification for an increased cost. You're going to be provided, contractors are going to be provided with better-trained, more supply of skilled workers, all for the same labor rates. There's no justification to that. And if you're saying that a company like Champion Systems wouldn't bid work here at Long Beach Unified because it would be more difficult to steal over $1 million in wages to their employees, I get that, but that's, we're going to be using these facilities for kids 50 years from now, and we need them to be constructed to the highest standards. Opportunities for Long Beach residents, the one person working for Long Beach Champion Systems, one Long Beach resident, wages were stolen from them. Over $10,000 in wages were stolen from them, and that's not what we're talking about for opportunities for Long Beach residents. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chris. Tommy, forgive me if I mess up the last name, Fave?
Fave.
Fave, okay. I'll buy that.
You didn't quite mess it up.
All right.
There's other people that murder my name sometimes, but it's okay. My name is Tommy Fave. I represent IBEW Electric Workers, Local Union 11. I wanted to thank the Board and the staff, the Superintendent, for bringing this proposal forward in front of you today. It's a long time coming. Project Labor Agreements, Community Workforce Agreements have been in place for over 50 years in our districts, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that's going to be discussed here by the facilities manager. When it comes to, you know, talking to other agencies, like the Port of L.A. and other school agencies, we've got to remember when it comes to thresholds that, you know, different agencies have different thresholds. And a school project and a port project is apples and oranges. It's not oranges and oranges, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, a school district project is a school project. It's not a port project, but that threshold could, you know, could be certainly, you know, lowered down to a minimum that's already out there in these, in other school districts. Also, what I wanted to bring up is, you know, local hire. We agree with the local hire, you know, percentages. We do that already in other school districts. We believe in, you know, bringing a Long Beach promise to students, to give them opportunities to come into apprenticeship programs, and that's our goal. Long Beach has always been close to me because I cover this service area, you know, in Long Beach, but we hope to see a proposed project labor agreement in front of you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Mayorga?
Hello, my name's Andrew Mayorga. I'm a business agent with La UNA Local 1309. It stands for Labor's International Union of North America. I'm here, of course, I'm in support of this, but I want to tell you the reason why. It's agreements like this that impact the community more than you realize. You guys are the only district in Southern California that has a STAR program, Successful Training and Apprenticeship Recruitment. It's a pre-apprenticeship that's in the district at this time, training your kids to graduate and continue on their education in the construction industry. You guys should be proud of yourself. Our program's been around for six years. Megan's a big supporter of it. Started out at Jordan, went to Beach, now we're at Lakewood and Jordan. We're probably going to be expanding to Cabrillo, and these kids are going to work on the docks and for the city of Long Beach on their PLAs. This is an opportunity for the district to finally make a big impact with your students. They're not my students, they're our students. They come from Long Beach. They're building careers, not jobs. We picked Jordan because the kids we're targeting are kids that don't have the means if they choose to go to higher education, so they need another opportunity where it's going to be a feasible and possible opportunity for them to make a career of themselves. And you have a chance to change the demographics of Long Beach, not for now, but generations to come, and it starts with this Board. It doesn't start with anybody else, anybody else that's taught. It starts with you guys. You guys are the electric leaders for these children. They don't have a voice. I see them every day. I don't know how many of you guys walk on these campuses, but these, they're lost, and it's unfortunate because some are going to go to college, and the ones that are not, this program has flourished. You guys should all check it out and see these kids. Now, our first-generation STAR kids are graduating, making $70,000, $80,000 a year, and they're 21-years-old, making more money than their parents, changing their bloodlines forever. So I'm going to leave you with this. You guys can, you're going to make a decision, you're going to go talk about it behind closed doors, but when you are, think about those children you're going to impact if you move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're at presentation, Measure K and Measure E updates and project labor agreement proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Members, Superintendent Seinhauser's staff, and our friends and partners in the audience. So today, I'm going to start with an update to our current bond program. I'll be finishing up with some discussions about PLA, which we've just heard some public comment with, but really quickly, I wanted to take a minute and talk about some of the activity that we do have going on in our construction program. We are approaching the end of summer, and we have a lot of schools that will be coming online in the next days and weeks as we get ready, or less than a week, as we get ready for school to open. So at the very start, we have a lot of activity happening right now with a lot of schools that are, that'll be completing. We have air conditioning happening at Barton, Bertram, Longfellow, Lowell, MacArthur, Mann, McKinley, Webster, right now where I take a breath, Jefferson, Keller, Lindsay, and Lakewood. Those are all actively in construction, and will be occupying those school sites over the next few days as we look to move teachers back into their classrooms and begin the new school year. Many of them have been successes. We've had a couple of challenges along the way that we've been working through, as to be expected, but many, many, many kids will be back into their, into their permanent classrooms as we start this new school year. We also have other projects happening, new construction happening at Milliken. If you've been by Milliken lately, there's a building springing up in the old girls' softball area, and so we are, that building has come along quite nicely. We're well, fully on schedule there. The new bleachers and lighting system has been completed at Polytech. We were over there the other night as we lit that place up, and it has new lighting, and it's a great look out there. And the new science STEM building at Soto is now fully completed and open. We now have students in those classrooms as schools opening, and things are moving along quite well. The Jefferson Field is completing. It looks quite nice out there. You should see pictures of that. And then we continued with our security improvements at school sites, as fencing, security cameras, door buzzer systems, and other features at school sites were being put in to improve the security at our schools. I did want to talk a little bit about the Jordan project, and the, as we mentioned earlier, there was a little bit of a delay with Jordan, and this is something that we've been working through over the last several weeks to manage. This is the Jordan project with the new 1,400 and 1,500 building, the auditorium band building, library, administration buildings at the school site. We were actually prepared to move in. We actually made a decision based upon kids and realized that it may not have been a best environment for kids, as it was other activities happening in and around where classrooms were going to be occupied. It was going to become a little bit of a challenge as we went through that. Many of the challenges out there were related to things like material deliveries. The industry is stressed right now in just the ability to receive materials. We had some challenges with the elevators. Jordan is a school where there's already some concerns related to student access to some of those spaces, so we also had a couple of design challenges that we had to manage our way through that, included overhead walkways and other things. We did suffer from manpower shortages. This is more of an indicator of the entire industry, as the work is prolific around the school industry, and contractors struggle to really get coverage. They get subcontractors that show up with minimal manpower. Work doesn't progress in accordance with the original established baseline schedules. And we also found a significant amount of unforeseen deterioration, just areas where old buildings needed to have more work than we expected. There was some deterioration in the library building that we had to address, which just added time and effort to our project. Ultimately, in collaboration with the executive team, it was, decision was made that it would be best if we just didn't move into those Jordan buildings. I do realize and I appreciate that it's a challenge to the school, but we wanted to make sure that we kept kids in the front of our mind and did the best thing for the students' education. So I did want to take a minute and talk a little bit about Jordan and moving through that. So moving on to other successes, we had a pretty robust deferred maintenance program this year. Somewhere a little bit, right around $10, $12 million worth of work was completed in this last fiscal year for our deferred program. These are things that don't always get a lot of limelight, or a lot of photographs, or ribbon cuttings, but are very, very important, such as roofing replacements, lead paint stabilization, repainting at school sites, asphalt seal coating, and asphalt replacements at school sites. So I wanted to take a minute and acknowledge our deferred maintenance teams, our major maintenance activities that were happening around school sites related to this work. Also, I wanted to take a minute and talk a little bit about our hard-working maintenance teams that were out there, too. So in addition to the bond program, we also have about 100 maintenance folks that have been working very hard over the summer and doing a lot of great work out there. Again, it doesn't get a lot of photographs. There's no press releases related to this stuff, but things like sewer line replacements, things like water system replacements at school sites, interior wall deterioration and replacement in the gym at Jordan High School as we keep those buildings operational and functional. There were some structural repairs at Grant that we need to do to do some breezeways and window systems that need to be replaced, and we spent quite a bit of effort over the summer over at Avalon. We sent teams over many times across the pond, as we call it, across the channel, to Avalon, and we spent a lot of effort really giving Avalon a lot of much-needed work. We did some paint projects out there. We also replaced some window systems. We did some plumbing and gas line systems at the school site. We really spent quite a lot of work out there. In fact, I was just talking with Mr. Ludenberry on Monday, and he was very appreciative of all the effort that had been put into Avalon, but I did want to take a moment and acknowledge our hard-working maintenance teams that are also working out there, day in and day out.
Alan, I have a question about the surface seal part, going back another slide. So we're going to be doing some surface work at Prisk. Is Prisk still on the list to be interim housing or a host school?
So Prisk will not be the interim housing. It'll actually be placed on the Stanford campus, is the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're actually working through some final plans that we may not eventually need that, depending on the population of the school and how we might be able to organize the work. We've had a lot of successes at places like Bixby, where we originally planned on moving off-site, but yet we're able to work out a scenario to keep students at their home school. It's better for everyone.
Right.
Even though it may be a little bit more jockeying at the school site as we go through the construction program, it is better for the community to keep them there. We're still working through those plans and talking with the school and looking at our construction documents to see how we could perform that work without having to move the students off-site.
Okay, and then also, surface seal at Riley. So Riley's on the list to have something done this, or?
Yes, so we are, we are working through that at Riley. So Riley, we'll be going through the design process now to do that. Riley has a lot of issues related to cracks and broken things. I think we went to a community meeting where we talked very at length about that.
I do remember that.
So we are adding that to our program to engage with Riley over this next, the remainder of this year.
Okay, so, just to beat a dead horse, so we are going to see work on the playground surface at Riley?
Yes, we are.
This year, so the fall?
Yeah, the actual hard construction work will be over the summer. It'll be over next summer, but there's a design work, there's other things that'll be happening as we look to do, like patching.
Yes.
To get into the details, we're going to be cutting out sections of asphalt and repatching those so that we can actually help alleviate some of those cracks that are out there and those big concerns.
Right, because we are using Riley as interim housing, and so it doesn't make sense for us to do the overhaul until we're finished with the interim housing situation.
Until future years.
Okay.
Until future years, yes.
But the patching is necessary, and we are working on that.
Yes.
That's good to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So talking a little bit, a quick snapshot about the successes of the program, I'd like to kind of leave you with some fingertip facts related to things that we have going on. We currently are engaging in over 90 active projects. These are projects from design, initial design through project closeout, which the total project value for those is about $1.5 billion that our team is actually currently working on. We've completed about 24 of the Measure E projects that were originally scheduled to be completed. This will be at the end of summer, which will ultimately be about 538 classrooms that will have been modernized in our program, which will impact about 13,821, give or take, students at each of these school sites, which is a pretty significant effort. That totals about 30% of the children that did not have air conditioning, when you do the rough numbers. So in three short years since we passed the bond, we've been able to impact about 30% of those students who were without air conditioning. So I take a moment to say, not that I did anything, I always tell folks I don't do anything, but the team has done a fantastic job in being able to rise to the challenge and the bar that not only the Superintendent has set for us, but the bar that I set for my team to say that we need to perform for our community and our students. So I'm very happy and I'm very proud of the team that we've been able to pull together to make this happen, so.
Alan, as we had presented to the West Side Neighborhood Association, status of the HSPAC projects and the information we shared with them, we basically said those projects would be done up for, done first and completed first. Where are we with that?
The, we started on the last school, which is Muir. So after Muir, all of the West Side will be completed. We'll have air conditioning.
Okay, I'll be happy to share that with the folks on the West Side Neighborhood Association.
By the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, two quick questions, since you just gave us where we're at with bond projects to this date. What's remaining in the bond in terms of funds, and then how many projects total was the expectation or the goal? So 24 out of?
So there were 51 projects that did not have air conditioning that were originally included in the Measure E bond. So the total amount that's unexpended is somewhere around $1.6 billion is unexpended.
Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, the vast majority of that has been earmarked for projects, though.
Right.
Yeah, there's not a lot of unallocated money there.
Right, and we just sold 450 or 400?
We'll be going out for sale tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Based on what we approved in June?
Correct.
No, just, correct.
Correct. Yeah.
Tomorrow, you said?
Tomorrow. I would just like to add, Dr. Williams, that for us to prioritize the schools on the West Side, on the West Side, we're dealing with air pollution from the 710 freeway, from the port traffic, from all the trucks, from, right, so there's a greater need, which is why the West Side is a priority for us because of the, you know, air pollution, and also for the higher rates of asthma with our children. So I think it's important just to take a look at why we needed to do that.
Right, thank you, Diane, for that clarification.
And Alan, I know you and I have talked offline, and I appreciate your staff being receptive to the delays at Jordan, which was, it's tough going in the school year not having some of those buildings. I completely understand that student safety is the priority here and making sure that our sites are clear for students to move about freely. Yeah, that campus right now is, it's all torn up, and we know that, and we know that this past year was kind of the toughest year in terms of losing both the library and the auditorium and the administration building. So as those things come back online, we will be thrilled and look for a great opening in January, hopefully, a great celebration, but just wanted to make sure that we're on track to restore some parking for teachers. We've taken away the U shape in the front, so we lost about 20 parking spaces there. The neighbors have been really patient over this long project, as have staff, but I know we talked about returning the parking situation for our teachers as the least we can do, since most of them now, some of them have now moved their classroom twice this summer to go back.
Yes, yeah, that is something we're working on now as we look at how we can free up parking, but yet still allow that access for construction activities to continue in that area. So we're working through that now to open up those areas, and you're right, the community has been very patient in the process, and I'm sure, much like you, I've spoken with many members of the community about that project, so, but we are being sensitive to that. We're trying to really be respectful to community partnerships that we have out there, but we will be working on that parking as we go forward.
Great, thank you.
Alan, let me know if you're going to cover this and new projects, and I'll wait, but since you only said we're going to sell bonds tomorrow. One of the reasons that we had to change and adjust some of the timelines was because we weren't able to sell bonds, so will that need to be revisited again? I think a few board meetings ago, we, you know, had a conversation around pushing back some of the projects precisely because we couldn't sell bonds. Are we going to explore that again, or are we good with the latest schedules?
Yes, so this bond sale was in accordance with that plan, that amended plan as we went forward. So this is, this is per, how we presented to the Board as the adjusted plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we'll move into current projects as we move forward. We've started, this will be a little bit of that slowing that you referred to as we look at, from going from 16 projects down to basically four, plus the continuation of Lakewood. We're starting, we have started over the summer of new modernization air conditioning projects at Alvarado, Bixby, Naples, Muir, and we're going to continue with the Lakewood project as we look to the second half of that work and complete that. We've also begun, and will be finishing by the end of this year, additional fire alarm projects, again with the intent of managing the safest schools imaginable, so we want to make sure that we comply with all of the fire alarm requirements we'll be putting in, projects at another six schools as we look towards that fire alarm. Moving into the next year, we'll actually be getting that process of throttling back up and adding more projects to the program. Fremont, Cumberly, Madison, Prisk, Robinson, and Wilson High School will be starting in the 2020, 2022, or excuse me, 2020, 2021 school year. We'll also be starting the new fields and tracks at both Milliken and Lakewood, and will be continuing with the new construction program at Jordan as we begin to engage the 400 and 500 building as we move towards the Long Beach Boulevard side of the school and begin the process of engaging with those buildings. So also, as part of our program effort, there's been a lot of activity that we've had with our, with our design teams and our planning teams to look at the what we're doing in our projects. So we've engaged in a program, a collaborative session of working with teachers and other administrators and other stakeholders in our district to look at our education specifications. These are things that really look at the what are the buildings that we designed? What do the classrooms look like in the 21st century as opposed to what they might have looked like in the 1950s? And really ensuring that we're building things that are, that work closely with the educational programs that we now offer. Things like technology integration, making sure that we're providing the most adequate technology to our classrooms so that the teachers have the tools they need to teach effectively, again, in the 21st century. Looking at support spaces, these are items that are really becoming more prevalent in the industry, things like gender-neutral restrooms. What does that mean industry-wide? There's still a lot of ambiguity there about what does that mean and what do those, what do those features require as we begin to engage in those concepts as we go forward. So we're engaging with subgroups in the district to talk with that. We've had principal meetings where we pulled principals from our high schools and had opportunities to sit down and discuss what that means for them and what their students' feeling is, and talking, and I think the Board has had students that have presented those issues forward, so we're engaging with that. And continuing with the concept of safety and security, how does that implement, how does that? How does that, how is that applied to new projects going forward? We're looking at electronic locks, working closely with school safety to, to add additional safety features, the ability to lock down schools remotely, the ability to control various areas of the school site and, and, and limit that access to those people that we don't want to, to be able to come into our school. So these are all issues that we've really begun to engage with, as well as lessons learned. I didn't put it on there, but we're really robust lessons of lessons learned. What are we doing and what did we learn from that? And how do we use that as we move forward in what we're doing to, to, to be better?
Thank you. Actually, on that note, Alan, so I appreciate that we're doing the lessons learned, and I know from our business meetings that we're talking about a lot of what lessons learned in the construction process and working with our contractors and how do we put contracts together and, and different things. I know you said when we're doing design standards, we're using what is the most recent, and we are engaging teachers. I'm wondering, though, if there's an opportunity to have some robust feedback from some of our teachers who have now, because we have teachers who have now lived in these buildings for a year and taught in these buildings, and, and I know many of them are long-term teachers who have seen the district through a lot, and I've gotten some feedback from, from some of them about what it's been like to live in those rooms, what the process was like. So I'm wondering if we, if there's a way to convene some folks either in person or through surveys or some focus groups around, what are the really practical lessons learned for teachers in classrooms? And I think sometimes those are things that are unanticipated by construction teams and even unanticipated by people who create the standards, because the standards exist in a vacuum and don't necessarily take our unique community into consideration. So if there's a way to elicit some feedback, both positive and stuff that we need to do better for next time from some of those teachers who have been living in those classrooms, so whether it's Cleveland or Kettering. But, but there's a real impact here. I think sometimes we talk about the construction and impact on students in an abstract, but when it really impacts the teacher in the room, even to what we order and why, and making it make sense. That those are some important conversations to have, not just for the impact on students, but the need or the ability for staff, included not just teachers, staff, to, to give some real-time feedback about what it is really like. Because while we're there, sometimes we hear the good stuff and we hear how it's all working together. But I think there's some important lesson learned on the stuff that's been more of a challenge or harder for students or staff or teachers to adapt to, or, you know, what the impact of the process was long-term on them, because I think once they moved into new classrooms, it wasn't over for them. There was more work to do over the year. So if there's an opportunity or a way that we could do that, I think we have some folks who'd really, who love this district, who care about this district, who live in this district, worked here a long time, who, who want to give the opportunity, be given the opportunity to be heard on some of that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that goes right along with our, our plan this year to really rely more on our customer survey, customer feedback, really reaching out to those folks that we survey or that we serve to be able to get, get their feedback from that. We've actually did a pilot at Lakewood High School by the teachers that had been able to move into the new classrooms, where we talked to them about things like what did they like with the process, you know, how were they treated during the process? Was, was there improvements to the process of moving and relocating back your classrooms that we could improve on? And then also, what did they like or not like about, about the classrooms that they moved back into? And we, we were able to receive some very constructive feedback, you know, some things that caused us a minute to step back and, and look at the way that we were doing a few of the, of the things. So we plan on moving forward with that. It's a, it's an online tool that allows feedback direct from the teachers through mobile apps or other things. It's not a, a static survey type of format. It allows for some free thinking and free comments so that if they do have ideas that are outside of the, the, the kind of fixed questioning of a, of a survey, they're able to do that as well. So we're really looking at moving forward with that as we move forward.
Great. And I think that's important because I think we probably will find that there are different issues across different levels. And so the experience of an elementary teacher teaching the littlest ones might be very different than a high school where you have folks who are a little more flexible and, and amenable to change when you're working with little ones who crave consistency sometimes. So that was great that we did that at Lakewood. I'd love to see some results across the different level offices.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Also, I have a question about the preparation or possible training for the administrators, the site administrators that are undergoing or preparing to undergo the construction. Because I know there's a lot of extra work that goes along with overseeing a site when you have construction being done on campus, and I don't know how we're preparing those administrators or are we providing information for them as far as what to look for if they walk their own campus and, and look at the progress of the classrooms, what things they should be looking for?
So, yes, we have engaged in that. So for the last two years, we've actually hosted a principal's session for the new principals that are going into construction, as well as the principals that have been through construction. It's a sharing process. We, we meet over at the TRC Center. We break into groups and we talk about the different elements of construction, what does that mean for you? So as an administrator where I potentially are going to be moving half of your population to another location, what are some of the real-life issues related to that? So we have principals that have been through the process that share, that they bring in topics of, of consideration so that, so that we can help the, the, the new schools really benefit from some of those lessons learned that we went through. So we, we will be doing that again as we move into new schools. But every year we've done that for the last two years, really getting principals all in one room and sharing. Carmen Hernandez was, was very instrumental in that, and, and so we'll be continuing that, that effort as we go forward to continue with that sharing and, and understanding of those challenges.
I'm glad to hear that we have that training in place because that's so necessary for the extra, you know, workload, the extra burdens that we're putting on the site administrators.
Alan, one of the things that I, I found really helpful was you, on an ongoing basis, making us aware of things that would impact projects in terms of either changing the scope and/or change in cost. And I know, you know, we spent some time talking about labor shortages and, you know, just costs of materials and/or supplies changing. And so even though I'm not on the budget committee anymore, I, I always found, you know, that information to be very informative, particularly if there were either changes in scope or timelines and/or if we had to amend, you know, projects. So just wanted to highlight the, the importance of, of you sharing. That information was always very helpful.
Thank you, thank you. I'll move back in. So the, the other big element on our program planning that we're engaging with is really looking back again at our master plan. A master plan is that document that the district has developed and updated over the years. It really tries to account for and quantify the need that we still have in our district. Obviously, with two major bond programs that have been, that have been moved forth in the district, it has obviously impacted that. Now, it's highlighted that we have other issues that have come up and we have other concerns, and as things change at school sites. So there's still need out there, even though we do have multiple bond programs. But we're really going through a, a program using some of our internal resources to update that document, to requantify what is the remainder of the need that's out there, what other things have come up. Things like, like whether or not there's portable classrooms. We have a lot of these older portable classrooms that have really pretty much lived their, their useful life. And so we, we really need to look at how do we replace those? Where do we need to replace those? And as we overlay declining enrollment, you know, do those spaces really need to exist any longer? Where do we need to remove them? Do we move them to other sites, other types of things? And then also looking at the other funding options. We do have state monies that are now coming in with the, the new governor who's selling bonds. So how do we use that money to best, best serve the needs of the district and, and address some of those priority needs? All of that, we're going to be putting together into a revised master plan, which we intend to bring back to the board sometime early in the next, in twenty twenty to really talk a little bit about what the remainder of our need is and other, and, and as we update that and reflect a lot of the great work that's going on.
Mr. Superintendent, would, would, would that also include a consideration for another possible bond at some time in the future?
Yes, we'll be talking about all those options in the spring.
So with that, we're, I'm going to now shift gears a little bit here and talk a little bit about project labor agreements. And we had previously had some discussions, some kind of high-level discussions about project labor agreements. And the superintendent asked me to bring back a little more detailed discussion, provide some options to the board and really look at next steps and, and process moving forward. So for the community, just quickly, a project labor agreement or a community workforce development plan, there's a lot of, of names for these type of agreements. They're really a contract or an agreement between the owner or the managing entity and the labor units that try to, that, that set the terms of work between the two different agencies. So it would be the district that would agree with the unions with a set of job site conditions that include execution guidelines, protocol for dispute, for resolving labor disputes. Community workforce goals can be included in this, including things like student employment goals. Those type of things can be included in here. So it's really a, a contract between the labor unions and the district on the operational aspects of, of a, of a construction program. So really, as we lead into this, I wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about the activities that the district has done to date, some of the things that relate to the, our discussions with the local unions and with some of our labor partners. At the very start, the board adopted and readopted a resolution back in April of two thousand and eighteen that dictated what our local hire policy was and what our local hire goals were. And I highlight this because this has been somewhat of a success in what we've been able to do. In April two thousand and eighteen, the board approved that resolution, and at that time, our local hire percentage was hovering just somewhere south, a little bit below five percent of local hire was that we were doing. Since then, we've been able to work closely with our, with our contractor groups, and we've been able to raise that to just, just a little bit below eighteen and a half percent local. These are, local is defined as the area that are, directly affects or impacts our students. We really overlay our student attendance boundaries, where our students come from, the, the cities that our students live in, and we use that as our guide to really determine what we, what we thought was local. So that is almost a three hundred percent increase from where it was prior to that effort. And so really commend our, our labor partners and others out there to be, to do, to really do quite well in our local hire. So following the last discussion, as Mr. Hana had said, we've had several discussions with, with our union partners as we've talked about what our different roles would be in this, some, some options that are out there. We've had great collaborative discussions related to what the PLA could mean for the district and, and what, what the, the unions be able to bring to us as positive aspects of this. We've also talked with other folks that have PLAs, including the Long Beach City College. We've had several discussions with their leadership, their, their bond program management folks, in fact, their, their, their PLA administration teams to really talk about real-life aspects of, of what that PLA brings to Long Beach City College and what their, their feelings have been on that. We've reviewed the Anaheim Union High School District PLA to really look at what theirs looks like and what they've been doing there. We even looked a little bit at the Port of L.A., excuse me, the Port of Long Beach PLA agreement. And now that's a much larger agreement. It's, it's very significant in the size and the impact area and the, the sphere of influence, I call it, that that PLA is involved with. But we looked at those and had conversations about how those PLAs were working. We also conducted meetings with our, again, our Long Beach City College folks and our Long Beach Call folks to talk about how these positive impacts could impact students. I was able to have a meeting with, unfortunately, our late Gene Egan was involved in, in these conversations as we looked at how this could positively impact opportunities for students. And then we reached out and we talked, I talked a lot with contractors, folks that would, that would need to be signatory to this, that would need to be partners as we go through this and receive feedback from them on what they thought the impact of this would be and, and how this might impact our coverage, things like whether or not they would be even willing to sign contracts that included PLA agreements and, and what they thought their experiences using PLAs or being involved in PLAs in other districts and how that would potentially impact what they do.
Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city of Long Beach also was engaged in the PLA, right?
They do have a PLA, but I, I did not engage with that PLA. I will as we go forward, but I, I did not have the opportunity to engage with, with, and, and look closely at their PLA.
And Metro L.A. has one as well, right, Alan?
Yes, yes. So I wanted to kind of jump into, just kind of summarize a lot of the activities is, there, there are some distinct advantages to PLAs. And, and I wanted to really focus and, and our attention to the student opportunities, because that is really what, what we focus on. There are opportunities to provide priority apprenticeships. And this is where Long Beach students have the ability to get into apprenticeships using, using this PLA as, as a mechanism to do that. Something similar to the Long Beach Promise Program, but we would, we would amend it or revise it so it was applicable to a, an apprenticeship program. As you heard earlier from some of the data, we have about thirty percent of our students that are not going to go to a four-year college. And so what do those students do? And this is an opportunity for those thirty percent to have another, another avenue to be able to, as, as one of our, one of our partners said, an eighty-five thousand dollar a year job, which I will say, you, you're done with four years of school with no debt, which is a huge one that they didn't mention. I'm surprised. But, you know, you're making eighty-five thousand dollars when you turn out and you have no college debt because you worked through the program. And so it's, it's really a fantastic opportunity for folks to get into the trades. Speaking as an old tradesman myself, I, I definitely agree, appreciate the program and the opportunities that are available for those. It also allows us to establish stronger partnerships to the pre-apprenticeship program. The, the training and the opportunities for students to have available to get into the apprenticeship program at the very beginning. Long Beach City College operates a very robust program there, and how we would be able to steer some of these efforts and be able to create these pathways for students to get into Long Beach City College and then bounce right into the unions program. We can work and, and create those opportunities. Really creating that formal apprenticeship program that, that exists from the high school level as those classes exist in our high school programs right into the unions is, is a huge advantage for this program. And really looking at, I think it was mentioned early, an apprenticeship coordinator. One of the things that we're looking closely at is how do we get the words to these, these children? Getting really exposed to them that there are options that maybe don't, that are outside of the traditional four-year school? And who does that? And who actually manages that? The Long Beach Call Program does a great job there. We're really looking at creating an apprenticeship coordinator that works with all of our high schools to really, truly get the message to the students so that they know that this opportunity exists. And then again, working closely with our Long Beach Call Program so that we create basically another, another wing of our Long Beach Promise effort. Really, other advantages are, are from the district is priority access to union labor pools. We talked before about challenges we have with getting contractor staff, getting labor on our construction projects. So by having a PLA, it does open up an avenue for our contractors to be able to get staff and get labor from the local labor pool. So that is a big advantage for us.
Alan, just before you continue, I just wanted, the student opportunities piece is such an important one. And it's not new. As you said, we have students who are doing some of this work in the STAR program with laborers, with Lyuna, that McCarthy was really helpful in instituting, and Jordan is pretty spectacular in laying out what the opportunities are. And I think part of students' understanding, so when you talk about having an apprenticeship coordinator and how do we make students aware of programs, that because so many of our sites right now are current sites, they're seeing the work being done, they're seeing the jobs in front of them, and in Jordan's case, they're having the opportunity, and Lakewood and Beach, they're having the opportunity to be present in their campus in a very different capacity than a student and engaging with the work. So I appreciate this piece, and I know we have some experience with this, and, but this is really, I think, our opportunity to, to make the difference, to, to change perceptions of students and families. It's, it's fascinating to go to Parent Day during the STAR program and talk to families and talk about how they weren't, their kid didn't ever know what they really wanted to do and the impact programs like this make. So the idea that this could be a widespread opportunity for our students based on our own kids that we've already seen do it, I don't want that to get lost as we continue the conversation. That really is, that this program and this process for us needs to be really student-focused and student-driven in opportunity.
I think the other, thank you for expressing that, Megan. I think the other aspect of that, or an additional aspect, not other, aspect of that is the narrative out there that somehow college and career readiness are mutually exclusive things. I mean, it's one and the same, all right? It's built into how we're educating students, period. So even though, you know, our latest data does demonstrate that thirty percent of our students are not immediately enrolling in college after that, this isn't an either-or thing, all right? And I'm not saying you've framed it that way, but there is this narrative out there in, in, in our career tech at options, in our pathway options. It's the same thing. All employers are saying twenty-first century skills to be successful in college are the same ones to be successful in high-skill, well-paid twenty-first century jobs. So I think that's part of our frame as well.
Right. Again, another idea that this is a both-and, and not an either-or. Everything is a both-and.
Absolutely. So, so in addition to the. So, so in addition to the student opportunities, really, and the access to labor pools, we look at, at advantages that, that our own district can benefit from, which is the opportunity to liaison with, with the unions to create our own internal district apprenticeship program. We, much like most contractor doctors, struggle to get high-quality staff in our own maintenance teams, in our own folks that we manage internally. And so creating an opportunity where, where we can collaborate with the unions to create our own, our own apprenticeship program, to build folks within that service our schools in the best, the best, most efficient way possible is, is a great opportunity for us. And then the ability to establish local hire and student employment goals. Really, really, that's where the rubber meets the road, right? Where, where we can establish numbers that we can quantify and we can track and we can, we can look at how, how effective we are so that, so that the, the people that need jobs are being able to get jobs right here in our district and being able to, to work in, in their, their hometown on, on projects that, that are impacting the lives of their children and, and, and others in the community. So it's very, very important as we go forward.
I especially like the part about a maintenance apprenticeship because that's investing in our own district in a very direct way. And we, we do have a need for skilled workers. I, I believe we only have one welder in the district.
Actually, he retired, so we have none.
Well, I'm sorry, I brought that up.
We're testing.
And, you know, the need for electricians or carpenters or that type of thing, you know, we, we have to be able to sustain that for the future.
Yeah. One of the side notes here is that one of the challenges of our Major E program is that we're now going to have 51 school sites that didn't have air conditioning. And so we have 51 school sites that need craftsmen to maintain and to keep running and to work on. And so that's an impact to our maintenance department. So how do we respond to that and how do we look at that? And that's, those are challenges that we're looking at internally, but this, this could help us as we look to bring on those, those high-quality folks that we need.
And hopefully, Long Beach City College in their redesigning of their CTE programs, hopefully, I believe they do have an HVAC component as well.
Yes, they do.
Yeah. Lots of work on our own school for generations to come and training the workers to do that is really important.
Got it. So moving forward, there's another side to the coin about PLAs. And there's a lot of, of information out there, there's a lot of opinions out there about PLAs. And I did want to take a moment to talk a little bit about some of the disadvantages of a PLA. There, there is very much a contractor, there's many contractors that are, that are adverse to signing PLA agreements that in our conversations with contractors, especially not general contractors, but especially when you get to some of the lower-level subcontractor trades, the smaller firms that, that are out there, there's an aversion to moving towards PLAs, whether that's an, just an appearance or, or, or an impression, but there's this general aversion to that. Our contractors don't want to get involved in additional burden, the additional scrutiny, the additional things that get involved with a PLA. And so ultimately, what happens is that we have a limited bidder pool, that we have less number of contractors that would bid on our projects. It is a seller's market currently. Now, if the economy turns and actually it becomes more of a buyer's market, this may not be such an impact, but currently, there's so much work happening in the industry right now that, that bidders can be selective, that many bidders have multiple proposals on their desk that they have to respond to and they're selective on which ones they actually do. So, so as we put additional burden and responsibility on some of these contractors, there is a lessening of the coverage that we will have. That's the general feeling from other agencies that are managing PLAs is that you don't get the coverage that you would have, which has a direct result in the increased project costs. So the less coverage, the less, the, the fewer bids that you get on a job ends up costing more. There's an additional burden that many contractors feel exists with a PLA, so that ends up costing them. They add, they add additional percentages to their bid because it is PLA, because they will have additional reporting requirements, they'll have additional process that gets involved because the unions will be working with them as they go through things like looking at their labor documents, looking at their certified labor, their LCPs or their labor compliance documents, those type of things. The general feeling in the industry is that if it's a PLA job, there is an increased percentage. I didn't put a percentage down here because that's very ambiguous. Everywhere you talk to, there's a different number. I've heard numbers all the way from high, single-digit all the way up to 20%. I can't quantify that. I can't, I can't corroborate that because unless you bid a project side by side, you know, right next to each other, PLA and non-PLA, you're not able to do that. But generally speaking, we will see a, an increase in costs on projects. There's particularly...
Can I just ask something about that, Alan, and you just sort of contextualize it? That has been one of the concerns that I've heard with respect to other PLAs, but I, I haven't seen really any good data to support that. I mean, I've heard the anecdotal data, so if there is data out there, Alan, it would be helpful to us, you know, to, to use as part of the consideration that, you know, there is a narrative by, by folks that express concerns about PLA, about increased cost, but I've yet to see good data on that. So if, if the data exists, it, I think it would be helpful to, to see that.
I, I think, I, I much like you, struggle to find good, good solid data in that and it doesn't. There's a lot of anecdotal information out there, there's a lot of perspective. I've talked personally with other administrators such as myself around the state about what their feeling is, about what they, what they're looking at. It's particularly challenging in a seller's market where, where our prices are very sporadic, depending on the time of year and coverage and those type of things. So that's why I talk in generalities, but in generalities, we do see a, an increased cost based upon PLAs. And I will continue to look for more information to provide to the board as we, as we go forward.
Where, where I have seen it more and heard it more, again, with respect to other PLAs in our region, is around the accountability piece, all right? But that's the way that we uphold the PLA, all right? So there's, there's no way around holding our partners accountable to things that we agree on, and that would be the same in any procurement process.
And sometimes they need to be held accountable, right? So, yes.
Right. And on, on that same line, I know we've done a lot of active recruiting of local subcontractors, contractors with Long Beach City College for the past couple of years. And so again, as we consider this, do we, are we at risk for losing, some of them are maybe more hyper-local subcontractors who are smaller, who choose not, will maybe choose not to bid, this is back to, is their data, who potentially wouldn't bid on a project because, not because of anything they're doing wrong, but potentially don't have the capacity within their very small business to do the compliance work? So as we look again and do a really comprehensive study, understanding, I know you've talked to some, some local folks that may be talking as well to some of those folks who reached out to you lately, I think that would be an important voice as well, not just our longstanding relationships, but maybe some of those newer folks and how we can best support them to continue to be a part of our work.
I think you hit on an area and particularly a challenge is in our, like, hyper-local, I like that word. Those are some of the areas where we potentially could lose some of our, 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 our coverage, you know, the, the contractors that we, we would use. I would just use some numbers comparing it to the Long Beach City program just because that's where I have accurate, quantifiable numbers. When we look at, at Long Beach Unified or Long Beach City College's core local program, they're only at about 9%. So compared to our 18, which we currently maintain with our program, Long Beach City College is down to 9%. Now, they're up to about 60 if they look at their multi-tier, their third tier, but that happens to be all of LA County. So it depends on how they define the local, how we work with the unions to define how we set those goals. But it, but it gives you a perspective on exactly what you're saying is, is we would lose some of those smaller contractors that are maybe more hyper-local or theoretically potentially lose those contractors.
So, so perhaps there's an opportunity as we move forward and we work with our partners to try and fix that before it happens, if we know that that's a potential, that as we craft this, that we really look at ways of being as inclusive as possible, so as not to lose that work. So I, I raise that as a way to not have a lessons learned six months later, or if it's something that Long Beach City, that has, that Long Beach City College has already learned, that as we draft this, that it, it really does meet as many needs and locally as possible.
Yeah, and I think, and you'll see this in later in the presentation, and I want to commend Alan and his team because they really have, like, in good fashion, we want to present all sides to the story because like any, there's nothing that's 100%, you know, positive. There's always some type of challenge, but you want to way outweigh the positive versus the challenges. And this is a huge opportunity for students, employees, and for the community. So, but one way to, to address that is, as you'll see later on, is how, if the board does go down this path and adopt a PLA, is how we structure it. So for example, a recommendation from me would be that you structure it as a pilot, we always do, you structure it at a certain level so that you protect all things. So that, for example, you don't want to lose a local contractor that is only going to do a small job that's been with us and done a great job. So you might structure the, down the road in the negotiations that, you know, there's multiple ways to do this, as Alan will talk about, but how, it's the how, you know, when you do it and you go and you do it for a certain period of time and you evaluate it because the whole goal is that we want to do all these great things for our students and great things for our employees and, and obviously for the, the community because these are their dollars, these are the tax dollars, our work. So I do want to commend Alan because he's done a great job of looking at the whole gestalt here, which is really important.
Yeah. And to, to continue going in the direction that you just shared, Chris, I think the other thing that we, that we'll look at here, Alan, and I'll let you proceed, is one of the things that may or may not impact that, if we have data, is the threshold amount, right? So the size and scope of projects, right? So the threshold's too high, you know, how many projects are we actually going to do that are $50 million? If the threshold's too low, also then who does that impact, right, in terms of the hyper-local folks? So, yeah.
And I, and I think both the city of Long Beach and Long Beach City College are both in kind of review at their, the three-year mark, so it's probably a good time to talk to those partners about some lessons learned.
So to finish the, the slide, there are, as we've just been talking, there are, there are particularly negative impacts to the lower-value projects as you look for those smaller firms that would, that would be doing it. Those are the ones that really aren't sophisticated enough to kind of work through these processes. And then there is an administrative cost on our side. We, we'll have to manage it internally, we'll have to pull, pull together a team, whether we use that from outside forces to, to help manage that. It almost is akin to some of the old labor compliance programs that we used to maintain years ago, but we'll have a, an increased cost on our side to be able to, to manage that going forward. There are options available, and this is part of what we were already, we broached and we were talking about. And really, it's up to the board to determine the scope of projects that will be applicable to the PLA. Some districts have done individual project lists where they've picked out marquee projects and those have been, have been the ones that have been subject to the PLA, project value thresholds, or even funding source thresholds, so that only certain dollars are, are subject to the PLA and other types of dollars are not subject to the PLA. So all of those are options that are available as we go forward. The link to the agreement, really looking at it as a pilot, really, this is the first time we, we as a district have broached this, this topic, or do we sign a multi-year agreements, right? Long-term partnership agreements with the unions. So those are options available. Apprenticeship opportunities, I mentioned apprenticeship coordinator. Really, I, I kind of envision this to be as somebody that works with the Long Beach Call Office, to closely engage with the students that we have at our school sites to really provide, provide opportunities for them. Fashioning LBUSD incentive programs for students, these would particularly be applicable to the most disadvantaged students, so students that really don't have the capital dollars at the very beginning to even get into the unions. There is a cost at the beginning to most students that go to the unions. They have to buy tools, they have to buy certain things to get into the union. So the ability to create maybe a, an incentive for those students. Union-sponsored scholarships, actually, that's what I was referring to, those scholarships to help those students, but also the student incentive, whether it's a bonus point program or some priority status for our students to be able to get to the, to the front of the list, to be able to get into the union program is, are options that are available. Really looking at, and this is a conversation we've had with the Long Beach City Program, is aligning our, our efforts with the Long Beach City College Program. They've currently been engaging in discussions about their PLA as well and really looking at how we might be able to align efforts so that we can coordinate all these, these activities together to create those opportunities and really maybe influence our buying power, if you want to call it that way, that where we can move together and partner with the unions as we go forward. And then establishing, these are other options, but establishing local hire and student employment goals. You know, what, what do we really want for, for this to bring to us? So...
Before you go on, Alan, I, I just want the board to kind of frame this, and I shared this with Alan, is that, you know, we just had a discussion earlier about the Long Beach College Promise, and we've gotten national recognition for this promise and where the data's good and, and we want to make it better. I really want that frame to be put on this project. So this is the other part of the Long Beach College Promise. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, is there another district that has, that would have all these things that we're talking about in the same frame of the promise?
I'm not aware of one that has that wide of a, of a scope of opportunities.
And you know, yesterday we talked about the race, and I am very competitive and as a district, we want to be the best. So I think this is an opportunity, as we discuss this and go forth, is to keep that frame because when you're talking about providing our most disadvantaged students and all of our students opportunities, you know, so that they can go into these wonderful trades. And I commend our partners for coming to the table because this could really be, again, a national recognition that we're, we're talking the and, we're not talking the or. And this is, and there is a great dialogue out there that a lot of people are missing, to be very honest with you. So I just want everyone to keep that in their frame as we go forth with this discussion because it is really a wonderful opportunity if we do it correctly, so.
So we're providing, at least for discussion here, some recommendations as we've, as we've brought together for moving forward here. So recommendations, as we talk about the, the options, are really looking at applying this PLA only to those projects that are funded by bond program funds, really not looking at some of those other general fund categories, those other ones that would be a little bit more complicated if we, if we applied the PLA to those funds. So really focusing the PLA to our bond funds, really projects that are $20 million and higher. Those, we still have quite a few of those projects out there, they're all over our high schools, they're all, many of our middle school projects, they're pool projects, they're, they are going to be gym replacement projects, they'll be projects that we'll be doing at Jordan as we move forward, as we replace buildings and those type of things. So we still have quite a few that are, that are that size and higher moving forward. Really only want to focus on projects that are solicited after the start of the agreement. Going back and retro, retro applying this to projects that may be in, in the works or in process would be particularly difficult and I think we would, we would lose a lot of our synergy that we've built on what's happening. So really looking at applying this to projects that start after the, or that, that are signed, agreements that are signed after the, the, the processing of this PLA agreement. We really want to establish local hire goals of 40%. So 40% of the, of the folks on our, on our project should be from our local hire. That's really doubling what we currently do and we think that that's an ambitious goal, but it's definitely achievable and we want that to be a, a part of our, our agreement. We want that, of those 40% of folks, we want 20% of those to be graduating students of Long Beach Unified School District. So we really want to establish the goal to, to get those students that are coming out of our school sites that maybe are not going to a four-year school, give them the opportunity to have employment on, on our projects and as part of this PLA.
Alan, just clarification on the 40% local hire goals. I just think it's important to note that there is a difference between people and hours and oftentimes, again, one of the, one of the concerns that's expressed with PLAs is that general contractors will get around the percent, a local hire by hiring someone, counting it as a person, local hire, and then most of the hours aren't worked by that person. So just a point of consideration that we need to be, you know, cagey and, and aware of what, what we're using to count the 40%.
Yeah, yeah. I've, I've heard of that, that technique of taking a body and moving that person around to four jobs in one day and then they get counted. So yeah, we, we can look at it by hours to make sure that we're getting true, accurate percentage, so, great. Moving down, we really want to look at priority access for Long Beach students in the apprenticeship program. Really the ability for our students that graduate and meet certain metrics, that they're able to get priority access into the union apprenticeship program, giving them that, that bump, whether that's a point bump or whether that's a, a priority status to be able to get access into that, we can work through and negotiate that. We're really very important to get student, student priority access. Really looking at a union-funded LBUSD apprenticeship coordinator. This would be somebody that would work with our Long Beach Call Office to really get the message out to students, to work with our high schools and, and work to develop some of that kind of grassroots effort at school sites to even get students exposed to this, this avenue of life, this, this pathway. Because we talked a little bit about term limits and a pilot study, this would be new to us, so our recommendation is that we, we look at a five-year term and then we come back after five years and look at extending that and maybe making some adjustments if there's areas here that we want to improve on or we want to be, get more ambitious goals or, or new funding sources or other things that are out there that we want to apply to this, this PLA, but looking at a, at a five-year term limit. We really want to look at establishing a building trades funded scholarship program. Again, I mentioned disadvantaged youth, the youth that... Again, I mentioned disadvantaged use, the use that I think would really want to get into this program. Sometimes one of the hurdles that exists is that initial cost that it takes to get into it. A lot of times, families will pay that for students, but unfortunately, in a disadvantaged family, they may not have those dollars to be able to spend. Sometimes it's as much as $1,000 for students to buy the tools and equipment that they need. So working with the unions to establish a scholarship program for those disadvantaged students to be able to get into the program. And then this is, the last one is here, is an LBUSD no-cost apprenticeship program. This is for our folks, this is for folks that will need in order to maintain these schools going forward, our electricians, plumbers, carpenters, HVAC fitters that we have in the district, establishing a program where we're actually able to benefit with some of the folks that we need in order to maintain the schools. So, next steps, really-
Can I ask one question or bring up one point? When you talked about the priority access for students in an apprenticeship program, I totally lost my train of thought. Oh, the idea that, there's a lot of work for us in here, so I know we're asking a lot of our partners to consider as we move forward with an agreement, but we need to do the work to make sure that a minimum of 20% of our students who are graduating are interested. So I do see reflected in that, the work on our end, with the help of our partners, to make sure that we are being as creative and innovative as possible to give opportunities and to expose our student populations to do the work, so that just struck me, so thank you.
And I think that also comes into play when we define local, right? Because in addition to the work on our end, there's also, that this benefits the larger Long Beach community, period, right? I mean, we've talked about it here, we're the largest employer in the city. So best-case scenario for us is that the folks that we're employing or, and/or that are working on projects for our district are also reinvesting back into our community, right? Whether they're living here, spending here, what have you, in addition to the student, or as part of the student piece.
So moving into next steps, clicker here. So really, so tonight, we've had great discussions here, but really getting direction from the board to begin that formal process of engaging negotiations with the, with our labor partners and with the various elements out there. Really, as we move forward, getting some discussion and direction from the board, I provided some recommendations, whether we want to accept those and move forward, but having some discussion related to that. Then following that, we're going to engage with our Long Beach Community College partners, really looking to see if we can combine effort, as I know they're still going through a discussion about their PLA, and what that would look like, and how we might be able to join forces to have a stronger alliance with the community college. Engaging with our trade partners, with the local building trades and the Long Beach Unified staff and our legal teams and others, to be able to begin that discussion, really looking closely at those agreement documents, and really forging those so that they create the best bond and the best alliance together with those, with that group. Really, my intent would be to bring back more formal issues at the November workshop, to be able to talk to you about specifics related to the results of those negotiations, so that we're ready to finalize and bring to you a final PLA agreement. The intent would be to adopt that probably right just after the winter break, as we look at the early part of 2020, to adopt that, and then move right into implementation in early 2020 with projects that'll be coming to the board, and that'll be applicable to this program. So.
Love the work, Alan. Thank you for putting this together. I mean, you've covered most of the areas, I think that then, through the negotiations and ongoing discussions process, they'll be covered. Just a couple of things that I'd like to highlight from my end, that I'd like to see actually moving forward as part of the next steps and recommendations. So the reason I referred to the Metro LA one is because that's been an example for best practices, and it touches on some of the areas that you've already expressed, both sort of the pros and the cons in terms of the narrative. I think one of the things that I'd like to see is at least some data on the threshold, right? Why the $20 million? What are the advantages or disadvantages to going lower and/or higher than that? I think, you know, there's data there, there's other PLAs that have $10 million thresholds, $5 million thresholds. So just some background information for us, in terms of what are those thresholds with the other PLAs. I do see this as an economic development strategy, right? I mentioned, we've mentioned, we've talked about, we're the biggest employer in the city, so this could be a very effective economic, responsible economic development strategy through our own procurement processes. So the other piece of this is also the 40% local hire goals, right? How are we defining local? What percentage of those, you know, we want our students, rightfully so, to benefit from, but not just around disadvantaged students, but disadvantaged community members in Long Beach, right? Long Beach is getting really expensive to live in. We have a housing crisis, right? We have a lot of issues in Long Beach. This is an opportunity, with the competitive nature of our superintendent, and all of us here are competitive, for us to be a vanguard in terms of how a district puts together a best-practices PLA that benefits our students, both through their educational careers, but then when they graduate, and then can go on to college and come back and get a high-skill job, but also our community members, the family members, the parents of these students. So, again, the local hire and disadvantaged worker component to me is important. In addition, and I like the idea of a coordinator, right? And the coordinator position, or entity, or whatever that is in the final product that we get, is also an accountability measure for us, right? So the idea that there's an increase in cost because of the administrative component, we already do that if we want to be in compliance for stuff, right? So it's also in the way that that gets framed, that assumes that we do know compliance right now as part of that, but the coordinator can help with both the accountability piece and the support piece, right? As we know from our Long Beach Call conversations, we may have a lot of students interested if we do a good job, but then we also need to find partners for those students, and I think that requires a lot of coordination and support beyond what our district may have capacity to do at this point. You know, the other pieces that are in here, Alan, you know, the five years versus the 10 years, against any background information that you have from other PLAs, I know we want to pilot and ease up, so just, you know, pieces of evidence and information that would be helpful to us as a board for the next steps would be super important. You know, other PLAs, you know, have penalties for folks that are out of compliance with us, so again, any information that you can provide there. You know, the last thing I would add in terms of next steps, and I'm appreciative that, you know, they're all outlined, we have folks here in Long Beach that have knowledge and have, you know, have been a part of these conversations with LBCC, with the city, with the port, so I would also suggest meeting with, we have a local hire coalition here in Long Beach to tap into their knowledge and expertise and get additional perspectives with that. So I'm excited, Alan, I appreciate, you know, the robust presentation that you put together, and again, I do see this as our district spearheading a local and regional economic development policy, right? And I do like the community workforce development and local hire policy as part of that, so thank you for that, and I'm 100% supportive of the next steps that you laid out.
Other questions?
I just want to thank Alan, your team, for, yes, a robust conversation, the research that you've done to our labor partners who have continuously engaged in this work, thank you. Thank you for informing us, and thank you for supporting our students. I think oftentimes, people think people parachute in, have this conversation, and take off, but those folks in the back of the room, those faces that I see have been engaging with our students for years. They are part of our community, so I'm grateful for their continued support. And when we talk about economic development, you know, we talk about Long Beach, and we talk about Long Beach Unified, and we also are the city of, we serve the city of Signal Hill, and we serve parts of Lakewood as well, and I think of places like Avalon, and what a tremendous opportunity this could be for our students who live in Avalon, and how do, how do we uniquely engage folks who live 26 miles across the sea to be part of this work, to take it back to their own economy in Avalon and make the difference there? And that will present a unique situation that other districts probably have not dealt with, that we need to be creative about, but I look forward to it, and I really look forward to this being an innovative national model of collaboration and how we work together to support our collective community and our collective workforce and students. It's an exciting time, so thank you for the hard work.
I want to thank you too, Alan. I have one question. How might an economic downturn affect our plans to go forward with our school renovations?
Really, an economic downturn could really affect us in a couple of different ways. Sometimes that's a positive way, because our economic downturn, you know, for the monies that we do have, it will increase our bidder pool, but if it affects housing, where it starts affecting our assessed valuation, many districts suffered through that during the downturn, the last downturn of the economy back in 2006, '07, and '08, where suddenly we have this approved bond authority, but we're not able to access it. So we have the approval to get the monies, but we can't sell the bonds because our financing has turned a little upside down. So it depends on the nature and how the economic downturn, the eventual, it's coming, economic downturn will impact, and what segment of the-
We trust you're on top of it.
We're looking at it all the time, we're having lots of conversations about that.
Trust but verify, John.
Both at the local and at the state level, really look at how this may impact us, and it really depends on how it lays out and what sectors of the community, or the economic community that it impacts. If it hits housing, it will hit us hard.
Yeah.
And so.
Other questions? Alan, thank you very much for the presentation, and also thanks to the labor partners who showed up to provide information on this discussion. Appreciate it all. If no other questions, this adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
Close session at three, Chris?
Correct.
So committee, maybe a two?